Good evening, everyone. It is so exciting to see a full house. So many smiles and so many kids in the room. We're so excited for you all to be here. So welcome to the March 12, 2024 Board of Education meeting for Arlington Heights District 25. I call the meeting to order. And Lana, would you please call the roll?
Niurman.
Here.
Scapolato.
Here.
Jogi.
Here.
Serniglia.
Here.
Michael.
Here.
Faso.
Here.
Okay, thank you, Lana. Please, if you could stand, if you're able, for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this evening, we'll begin with recognitions and presentations. We have a fantastic Parent Teacher Association District 25, as you all know, and we appreciate all that they do at our schools and district-wide for our parents, students, families, staff members. And tonight, we're excited to congratulate the many students who participated in the PTA reflection program. To help us celebrate our students, we welcome Megan Worthington, the Arlington Heights Council of PTA's president, and Shelley Daly, the Reflections Chairperson up front. And Dr. Byrne will read each other's students' names.
Thank you. So Dr. Jogi and Mr. Scapolato, if you could help them. Good evening, everybody. Hi, Shelley. As you know, the National PTA has a longstanding commitment to arts education, and the Reflections Program provides opportunities for recognition and access to the arts, which boosts student confidence and success in the arts in life. Students submit their completed works of art in one or all of the available arts categories: dance choreography, film production, literature, music composition, photography, and visual arts. Students, when I call your name, and I'm going to do them by school, if you would please come up. And Mrs. Worthington and Mrs. Daly have a very special certificate for you. And then our Board of Education also has a small gift of congratulations for you. And then you can sit back down, and when we're all done, we'll do another round of applause. And then we'll have you guys take a gigantic group picture, okay? So let's start. When I call your names from Dryden School, please come up. Michaela Carlson. From Ivy Hill, Darina Bagova. Such polite students. From Olive Mary Stitt, Thomas Andrews. Way to go. From Patton School, Elle Boylan. We start teaching them to shake hands so they're ready for eighth grade graduation. We have a little one over here who is jumping up and down cheering and fist bumping. We should all have your energy. There you go. Good boy. From South Middle School, Addie Daly. From West Gate, Matthew Cahodis. And from Windsor School, Katerina Machosurna. And Suniri Sona Soni. Another round of applause for all of our Reflections participants. All right, students and families, we usually take a picture in front of our blue backboard in the hallway, but there are way too many of you, so we're going to say, let's meet out front and take a large group picture. Thank you for coming. Thank you, PTA. We appreciate you.
Bye, Gina.
And then it's no big deal when you get to it.
Wow, that emptied out. We're all by ourselves. It's lonely now. Okay, we'll still try to have fun. We will move on to our board communications now to begin. Are there any board member updates for my colleagues? I have one quick update. I want to tell you just a little bit about COSBA, the COSBA Conference that we're all invited to. It was an excellent conference. It was very different from III because it's much smaller, it's intimate. I loved that it had two general sessions a day, so everybody would convene from all around the country in one space. And we had a huge Illinois delegation that went, so that was great. Some districts, like for instance Schaumburg 54, pretty much their whole board was there. So it was definitely a good conference. We can save the date for next year. It'll be, no, no, yes, next year, it'll be happening the weekend before our spring break in Atlanta. So if we want to learn and do school boarding and then be with the family there, that could work too. But a couple of sessions that I just wanted to kind of highlight, you know, the one session I went to, I brought some literature back that I'm going to pass around in a second, it was, I thought was really helpful for me as a board member, was about admin assistance. So I got a window into, a deeper dive and a window into world of Lana's world and how much a role like Lana does for the board and for the district. So that was really interesting, so I'm going to pass something around so you guys can flip through it. That was really interesting. I know Lori was in that session as well. Then there was a general session about a futurist spoke. That was super interesting in helping us as educators kind of look out into the future as what learning would look like and what skills would be needed with AI and our friend ChatGPT and everything. So that was super interesting as well. A great session by an Illinois colleague from Lydon Pride, you know, hashtag Lydon Pride up north, on culture and the team of cultures. And I thought one that was really great was one about fearless leadership, you know, building trust and resilience and psychological safety for every student and staff member. I thought that was really great. And we also, as District 25, were invited to present at the conference, so it was a great opportunity for us to present to a national audience, and we presented on equity-focused leadership and the work we're doing here in District 25. So that, it was a really great couple, a weekend away, so I thanked Dr. Byrne for taking a weekend away from her family to be there, as we as a board learnt and kind of took away skills for the benefit of this district. So we came back rejuvenated, recharged to continue to give back to our district. So that was a great experience. EdRed, do we have any updates, EdRed? As in Kevin?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, I virtually attended the most recent meeting on March 1st. And they started the meeting by Bridget Peach, who is a member of EdRed and runs most of the meetings, started by sharing with us that there are currently 97 tracked bills by EdRed scheduled to be heard in committee this spring. So she kind of just selected at random things that stood out and seemed of interest to her. So I'm just going to share the ones that she shared that I thought might be of interest to the rest of our board. So one of them, it's actually two different bills. There's one in the House and one in the Senate. So it's House Bill 4709, Senate Bill 3383. It's polling place legislation, two separate bills that would basically make it up to local school boards to decide whether or not the schools in the district would be polling places on election days. I know that we as a district have already, you know, taken action to not have students in attendance on those days. I know a lot of other districts have done the same thing, but this would be a way for districts not to have to make that sort of decision and, you know, keep students in school without worrying about it being a risk to possible student or staff safety. They are facing opposition from the Cook County Clerk's Office on that, so it's unclear whether this will get passed, but they are still planning to move forward with that, with those bills. The next one I wanted to bring up, because I've brought this topic up before and we've discussed it, you know, a lot in board meetings, is the request for grant money for new student arrivals in Illinois public school districts. There are two separate House bills related to that. One is 2822, the other is 3991. They originally were planning on asking for advocate, allocation of $35 million statewide. They've increased that quite a bit to 188 million, partly because of the expected inclusion of CPS schools within that, not just, you know, Cook County or the rest of the state. And Bridget Peach did share with us that she sent a sign-on letter to local superintendents with hopes that they would also express to legislators how newcomers have impacted schools and our budgets and what we need to be able to do to continue to support those students. One of the topics that she also brought up and related to this is some people who are questioning the necessity for these funds have been asking whether evidence-based funding also covers newcomers. And we were, the answer that she gave was because of the frequent mobility of these students, that they usually aren't captured through EDF. So that's one of the reasons that they're trying to fund this specifically as a standalone item, not just through EDF. Some other bills that were described as hot bills that they're just keeping an eye on right now, one is House Bill 4658. This would be, this would mandate curriculum focused on personal finance. And because this would add both curricular and course requirements to school districts, what they're trying to find is a compromise where it would be built into current consumer education courses that already are offered in school districts versus an entire separate course. Another one that I thought was really interesting, Senate Bill 2696, would require that by 2028, any buses bought, manufactured, or operated within school districts have three-point seat belt or harness safety mechanisms in seats, which, when I first heard it, it seemed like a no-brainer to me. I was like, why wouldn't you want seat belts on school buses? I even used to wonder that as a kid myself going on field trips. Why don't these have seat belts? We have them in our cars. But, but one of the people who spoke at the meeting pointed out, and this hadn't occurred to me, that there are often situations in which if there's an emergency and a bus needs to be quickly evacuated, having students who are, you know, if you have 50 or more students who are all belted in and the only adult on the bus is the driver, it's really hard to evacuate students rapidly when there's a need to do so, especially if those students are either too young or maybe because of some kind of either physical or cognitive disability are not able to remove the restraints themselves without the help of an adult. So it's interesting how that keeps going back and forth, and it's been a topic of discussion for some years, but it's, there are bills currently being discussed to bring that into, bring that into law. Another one that I thought was really interesting and definitely is going to be very controversial, and this currently applies to high schools only, but it regards student representatives on school boards, because I know that is a topic we've talked about, is having like kind of student leadership within the district. This legislation that would require, would require that starting on July 1, 2025, students who are reps on their high school school boards would receive all privileges of membership, including attendance at executive sessions and advisory, which, you know, people who are opponents to that idea bring up the obvious concerns about confidentiality and things to do with staffing and with student discipline and things like that. So they weren't very sure on how far that was going to go, but they thought it was something to pay very close attention to and is going to get a lot of attention in the public education community in the coming future. So there were several others, but I don't want to go on for too long. I will continue to share updates on those and anything else that comes up in the next meeting.
Thanks, Kevin, for that update. And of course, as those EdRed updates are in our emails as well, so anything that you want to follow up on that Kevin shared, we have that in our email from EdRed. Next thing, we'll talk a little bit about IASB. I can't remember if we had a board meeting after this. I don't think so. We had gone to the North Cook Division meeting. I don't think we've had a board meeting then. So the, the board attends kind of these division meetings as a professional development. So we were there in Skokie District 73.5, a really unique name, and it was excellent. They did a great job hosting the event, and the topic of discussion that day was a super important one, which is teacher shortage. As we know, in Illinois and across the country, we are really facing a huge teacher shortage. And one thing that struck me from COSBA Conference when Dr. Doug Reeves had spoken, he's an acclaimed author and educator, of course, there's many reasons for the shortage, and one of them being, well, one of the things that we need to pay attention to as a board and as a community is that, you know, we want to continue to retain our teachers and teachers, not only do they need the money and the dedication and the time that we need to give our teachers, but the respect, right? And that's a really important piece that the research shows is, has caused many to leave the field of education. So it's really important that we, here in District 25, we definitely highly respect all our educators and our teachers and applaud them for everything that they're doing. So that was a great topic that the researchers presented on that evening. The next thing we have on the table is NSSCO, Liz?
Yes, the biggest thing happening at NSSCO is happening tomorrow night. There is a bingo night for the foundation at the Arlington Ale House from 7:00 to 9:00. If you want to, for adults only, if you want to play bingo, I'll be there. I've also heard there are amazing raffle prizes and all sorts of drawings and amazing things happening. So everyone in the community is welcome. They'd love to have a representation of all of us in 25. I will be there. I will save you a seat if you'd like to come with me.
Oh, that's fun. I'll be stopping by, Liz. I'll be there. That's excellent. Okay, now it's time for community input. So I'd like to remind our audience that the opportunity...
Do we have any sheets?
Oh, yeah, do we have any? Oh, okay. So I don't have to read the script today. Thank you, Lana. Thanks, Lori. So no, no input today from the community, maybe later on? So we'll move on to communication from district partners, and now for our first communication from district partners, we have Megan Worthington, I believe, or maybe Megan.
She probably went with our PTA recipient.
Yeah, so, so she was already here?
Yeah.
So no reports, so we saw that she handed out dozens of awards tonight. ABC 25, Gina?
Yes, so we have two updates. The first one is a save the date, and that is for June 1st. So in place of our annual race this year, we are delighted to share that we're going to do a fun fair. Inflatables, carnival games, food, a couple of surprises. That will be really interesting. So we ask everybody to save the date for June 1st, and please plan on coming out and supporting ABC 25. And then the second one that I have is an update. In addition to thank you for everybody who participated in all the fundraisers so far, is our Fork Farm, I can't say that fast, initiative, which is our district-wide fundraising initiative that is still running, and that is working with Sandra Voss, as I have explained before. We are deep diving into the world of hydroponic farming. It's been a transformative experience for the students at both Patton and Dryden, who have been able to enjoy the opportunity to cultivate and consume their own lettuce. And right now, I believe it's at Ivy, and the students at Ivy are getting to enjoy it as well. So the foundation is striving to raise sufficient funds to be able to purchase one additional hydroponic unit, and ABC 25 has said that we will match up to $5,000 as we raise the money. And so that is our big initiative for the district, and I brought show and tell. So if we could roll the video?
Well, the Fork Farm is a hydroponic garden system. It's vertical gardening, and you start seeds and put them in the garden, and they grow, we grew lettuce and basil. And it's basically just runs on water and electricity, and you can grow vegetables year-round on it.
Yeah, apartments, condos, more options for more people to be able to grow their own.
So we're teaching the kids how we don't need soil to grow plants, that we use water by adding nutrients to the water in order to get a nice crop of plants, and the plants last longer than they would from the grocery store.
And a lot of kids had the preconceived idea that plants do need soil to grow. That was one of the first lessons we did, where we asked them to think, do plants need soil? And almost all of them said yes. And then as we went on in the lessons, and they realized that they truly don't need soil, they just needed nutrients, sunlight, and water.
Fourth grade has a unit in which we study the evolution of farming and how farming has changed over time. And so we were offered the opportunity to have Fork Farms, hydroponic farm here at Dryden, and we thought it would be such an awesome opportunity for the kids to get a chance to be actual farmers and see what farming in the future can look like.
We decided to integrate it into the LMC with the fourth-grade curriculum. last longer than they would from the grocery store.
And a lot of kids had the preconceived idea that plants do need soil to grow. That was one of the first lessons we did, where we asked them to think, do plants need soil? And almost all of them said yes. And then as we went on in the lessons, and they, they realized that they truly don't need soil, they just needed nutrients, sunlight, and water.
Fourth grade has a unit in which we study the evolution of farming and how farming has changed over time. And so we were offered the opportunity to have Fork Farms, Hydroponic Farm here at Dryden. And we thought it would be such an awesome opportunity for the kids to get a chance to be actual farmers and see what farming in the future can look like.
We decided to integrate it into the LMC with the fourth grade curriculum. We talked about where our food comes from, we talked about some historical innovations in farming, we used some materials from the Farm Bureau. They have an AGMAG with different topics and careers, and so we talked about some of that, as well as some farmer rights and acting some pieces.
They even, a lot of them hadn't planted anything before, really, so it was just a new experience. We have a lot that might be in a condo or apartment, as well as the houses that just don't have gardens themselves. So it was just kind of a fun experience to see how fast it sprouted from those seeds. And, you know, that they looked different, they could kind of distinguish.
Yeah.
You know, oh, this one's clearly basil, this one's, this one's going to be lettuce, you know?
Yeah.
And then we were saying it was perfect, that it kind of like fed right into our science unit, and we're planting pea plants. And they, they just can, we can jump right in, you know, we can jump right into that, those experiments, because they already kind of know the basis.
Yeah.
Because of you and all this, this project, so.
I think they're also learning responsibility. They are excited to come up with an organized way to keep track of who's going to get to take the water, check the growth, check all the, like, the water level to make sure everything's growing properly.
Yeah, I think it was exciting for them to also see it go from a seed to the big leafy lattice with the, and then pulling it out, the roots were really long. And that was really exciting for, they had no idea.
Right.
That the roots were behind the, the wall in the Fork Farm. And that was really exciting when they pulled it out to see how long the root system were.
How long they could pull them out and get them, right? Because it was a little hard to pull them out, but then once they got them, I mean, they were really long.
I know, it was amazing. So it was very exciting for them to see it just grow so fast.
I never had so many kids ask me, do we get to eat on farms?
So when we did it with gardening club, we had, I believe, 12, maybe 14 students in the gardening club. And each student, when we harvested, came, and they get to bring home a whole head of lettuce. And then the rest of the lettuce was cleaned and washed and everything, and served here at Patton for all the students to try.
Right, during our lunch.
During our lunch here at Patton. And then what was left after that, I think they used at Thomas for the salad bar, which was pretty exciting for the kids to hear. Something that's going to be, is not here at other schools, too.
Thanks, Gina, for sharing that video with us. You know, we've been talking about it, and it came more alive with the video. So we'll definitely have to head over to Thomas Middle School for the salad bar. Does it sound like it? Like, lots of great salads. And actually, you know, that question when they said, do you need soil? My answer would have been yes, too. So I learned something as well. So that's really interesting as far as farming in the future. So definitely continue to support ABC 25, and thank you, Ms. Voss, for all your hard work as well. Next up, we have ATA with Allison Berg.
Hi.
Hello.
Good evening.
Oh.
I am here to shine the spotlight on South this evening.
Can you hear me now? Yes. You can hear me without the microphone, let's be serious. So tonight, I'm going to shine the spotlight on South Middle, it's a gift, guys, on South Middle School. So what is going on at South? South's wrestling team qualified for a school record, 11 wrestlers for the IESA sectional tournament. They had two wrestlers qualify for state, and there's a couple of pictures of the wrestling team and our wrestlers qualifying for state. The girls volleyball team, 7th grade, had a great season with many first-place finishes in various tournaments. The 8th grade team won their regional and will compete in sectionals this week, and there's a picture of those teams. Band and chorus, South had a number of musicians that participated in a solo and ensemble contest on Saturday, February 24th. Many South band and chorus students had the opportunity to take a field trip to the Lyric Opera of Chicago. And there they are. The South and Thomas Student Councils worked together to have a field trip to feed my starving children, and together they packaged 129 boxes for a total of 27, over 27,000 meals. So congratulations to them. The Cardinal Players, the South Cardinal Players had a successful improv show in February. They were able to raise $600 to donate to the Bear Necessities Pediatric Cancer Foundation, which is awesome, and there's a picture of them on stage. I must always present about South at the same time of year, because I always have the 8th grade graduation pictures, and there they are, which I love to see. So there are South graduates getting ready. And then Science Olympiad, big news, placed second at Harper College in regionals. And it's so, as a side note, it's so interesting that I have students whose brothers and sisters participated. So the kids all come, like, it's like district-wide, the kids come back so excited about Science Olympiad. So I had heard all about it on Monday when the kids came back. So very exciting, and it like spreads through the district since our families are everywhere, which is pretty cool. I'm going to piggyback on you. I just wanted to talk about a couple other things that were going on around the district. And this is a picture from Ivy. Students are busy growing produce in their hydroponic farms. They're having a blast. The project was assigned to the 4th grade team, which now I also teach 4th grade, so now I think we need 4th grade to do this at Windsor as well, because it goes perfect with the social studies unit that we study called Midwest Changes in Agriculture. So the students planted seeds, they grew their own seedlings and watched them grow. They're enjoying the process, and they're going to have a salad party on Thursday. So if you really want to have some salad, head over to Ivy Thursday, they're going to be having their salad party then. We also had the hydroponic farms at Windsor, which some of the teachers were just showcased in, and all the students in the lunchroom ate them. There was actually a picture of our 5th grade students eating the lettuce in the, in the slideshow. Super exciting, the kids loved it. It just piques their interest. Nobody can walk down the hall with like out looking in and asking about it and talking about it. So it's a very cool project, and it's awesome that so many buildings get to, you know, participate in that. And then finally, there's a couple other pictures from Ivy with their seeds. It's not as good as the video, but, you know, a few more pictures. And then finally, Windsor had, Windsor School had their second annual cultural arts fair. Students actually spent the whole week learning about cultures around the world. We started the week off with a, the aloha dancers came to do a hula show on Monday. Every day during our specials, the PTA had volunteers come in to teach the students about different cultures from around the world. So during gym and music and art class, there were parent volunteers to teach them about the different cultures. And it kind of culminates on Thursday night, where the students can put boards all around. I don't even know how many people participated, but there's more boards than I can count. And of course, Ms. Berg took the pictures, and they're all of food. But, I have more weight. But they put up their boards, and then they stand and they showcase where they're from, and they talk about the pictures and their grandparents and the food that they eat. It's just such a cool event, and it draws so many people to come to Windsor, and it's awesome. And the 4th graders provide entertainment by playing the African drums, and it's just a very cool event for our community. So here's a couple of pictures from Bulgaria and Taiwan. It was like the biggest loaf of bread I ever saw, which is why I took that picture. And then here's, of course, my class playing the African drums. There's a few more. Super talented, super fun. The kids love it, and it, the whole gym was filled. This is like before we let the crowd in. And of course, there's a few more. And of course, now here's the food, that I, of course, took pictures of, which is, I think, such a cool part of the night, that you can go around and taste food from all the different countries that are there. So super fun, and very educational, and it really brings our community together. So that's the spotlight, what's going on around the district right now. We, we like the food pictures. Yeah, who doesn't like food, right? So thank you for allowing me the opportunity. I'll be back next month with a different school. Okay. Thank you so much, Allison.
I'll just add, sorry, I'll just add Allison's report in this week. Both Thomas and South have Science Olympiad teams that are grants. 8th grade, girls. State.
That's exciting, Science Olympiad. And talking about cultural fair, Dryden is having a cultural fair coming up next month as well, so I know it's going around the whole district, so that's excellent. Our next item is a consent agenda, which is an action item. Please, could I have a motion?
Madam President?
Yes, Greg.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items on the consent agenda as follows: A personnel report, an addendum to personnel report, B treasures report, C invoices, D fixed asset disposal report, E regular enclosed session meeting minutes of February 13th, 2024, F board bills.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And Lana, could you call a vote, please?
Neiman?
Yes.
Scott Bellato?
Yes.
Jogi?
Yes.
Serniglio?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Faso?
Yes.
Olenichak?
Yes.
Thank you, Lana. At this time, I believe Dr. Kay has some new administrators to introduce to the board, which we always love.
Thank you for giving me this moment to introduce and welcome one of our administrators that was able to join us this evening. So if I could have Andrea Luso come on up. So with the passing of the consent agenda, I am excited to introduce Andrea in a new title. Currently, she's one of our coordinators, and now she will be a Director of Student Learning. Congratulations, Andrea. I have a small token of appreciation in the first bag with the ribbon. And then she brought two special guests with her that I'd like to also introduce. One is a little taller than the other. So the taller one is her husband, Mark. Welcome, Mark, thanks for coming. And the shorter one, Charlotte. How old are you now, Charlotte? Six years old. We wanted to also give you a gift and say congratulations to mom. We are thrilled. Thank you.
That's so exciting. We're so excited that Mark and Charlotte could join today. Thank you for coming, Charlotte.
And you're welcome to stay. But I suggest Charlotte take her gift home and have fun with it.
We'll now move on to business and finance. Bye, guys. And the next item is approval of student fees for the 2024-2025 school year, and this is an action item. Please, could I have a motion?
Madam President?
Yes, Greg.
I move that the Board of Education approve the student fees for the 2024 through 2025 school year as presented.
Thank you. A second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Kevin. Ms. Malik, could you please present the information?
Yes, thank you. Our recommendation for student fees for the 24-25 school year includes firstly, increasing the paid rider bus transportation fee by the same increase that I'm recommending the Board approve in our transportation contract. So at 7%, it would bring the paid rider cost to $578 for the entire year, both directions. We're not recommending any change in our breakfast or lunch fees. We are applying for a waiver to use some of our food service program reserves rather than raise the fee to the USDA weighted average amount. Because we can't make a profit, quote unquote, on our food service program, and we received a significant amount of money through the pandemic, the federal government funding, we're looking to decrease those balances, which is the reason we're not recommending an increase in those fees. We're also adjusting our fees for items that parents purchase, such as safety goggles and the gym uniforms and the graduation fee, as we typically do, to align with what our actual costs are. And in this case, they're actually slightly going down for next year. We are recommending an increase in the consumable supply fees for grades kindergarten through five. It's been over 15 years since we've raised our student fees. The increase I'm recommending is $20 in a, per year, so it brings that fee from $55 to $75 per year. That's based on analysis of our cost of our consumable items that we provide, we purchase for individual students and provide them, such as their math workbooks, science notebooks, planners that they take, fill out, and we buy new ones in the future years. And also the significant increase in some of the costs we face as well, such as our copy paper costs. The lower fee for the half-day kindergarten program for those families that may choose a half-day program is based on the materials anticipated to occur for that curriculum. We're not recommending an increase in the middle school fees based on the analysis of those costs. Finally, we are recommending the implementation of a $35 per student early childhood fee. Historically, we have built this fee into the calculation of the early childhood tuition cost. But moving forward, we are recommending to separate this fee out, so it will be charged to all early childhood students and not included in the calculation of the tuition costs for the paying students.
Thank you so much, Stacy. Anyone have any questions for Stacy? So I wonder if we're saving money on the lettuce? We don't have to buy any more lettuce. Okay, seeing no questions, Lana, could you please call the vote?
Scott Bellato?
Yes.
Jogi?
Yes.
Serniglio?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Faso?
Yes.
Olenichak?
Yes.
Neiman?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The next item is the approval of joint purchasing cooperative resolution with OMNIya Partners, and this is an action item. Please, could I have a motion?
Madam President?
Yes, Greg.
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution authorizing participation in the OMNIya Partners Joint Purchasing Cooperative.
Thank you. A second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Kevin. Stacy, could you please present the information?
Yes, the reason I'm bringing this to the Board is because it does require me to click on continue to sign up for this OMNIya program. But we have been a part of what started out as the U.S. Communities Purchasing Cooperative for many, many years, for over 10, 15 years, which then converted into the National Intergovernmental Purchasing Alliance, or NIP Alliance, which we have purchased through, and now has converted into the OMNIya Alliance. It's all been the same program, just taken over by different groups. But because they asked me now to click on this, signing off on a master agreement with OMNIya, and it's been a long time since I brought this to you, and it was originally U.S. Communities, I'm bringing it back to kind of renew that approval for this OMNIya program, specifically because, as you'll see later, I am recommending we use this program to do our furniture replacement purchase. So just kind of timing-wise, thought it all makes sense just to have all our ducks in a row.
Thank you, Stacy. Any questions for Stacy?
Just so Stacy and the Board, where I updated that resolution in the signature folder with today's date.
Thank you. Oh, interesting. Lana?
Jogi?
Yes.
Serniglio?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Faso?
Yes.
Olenichak?
Yes.
Neiman?
Yes.
The next furniture replacement action item, please, could I have a motion?
Madam President?
Yes, Greg.
I move that the Board of Education approve the furniture replacement plan and authorize a volume purchase under the OMNIya Purchasing Cooperative through Frank Cooney.
Second.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Go for it. Stacy, yeah, if you could present the information for us?
Yeah, so I do, oh, there we go.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. So this furniture replacement plan was, is coming before you as part of our strategic plan in coordination with the furniture needs for the implementation of full-day kindergarten program. It's part of the stewardship of resources goal under the strategic plan. Sorry, trying to... In terms of the strategic plan connection, parts of our key vision that this plan addresses is to cultivate the personalized environment of excellence for every learner, to foster collaboration and engagement, and ensure equity in resources, access and opportunities for all learners and staff to work, learn, and succeed. So this furniture replacement plan was, it's coming before you as part of our strategic plan in coordination with the furniture needs for the implementation of full-day kindergarten program. It's part of the stewardship of resources goal under the strategic plan. In terms of the strategic plan connection, parts of our key vision that this plan addresses is to cultivate the personalized environment of excellence for every learner, to foster collaboration and engagement, and ensure equity in resources, access and opportunities for all learners and staff to work, learn, and succeed. So one of the action items for the stewardship of resources group was to address this, or under the addressing the time, space, and aging of facilities, was to measure our current furniture throughout the district and propose a plan for updating. As we know, teaching styles have changed over the years. However, we have not done any major furniture replacement in the district since probably a large purchase back in the late 1990s. Students have changed, the need for collaboration and interaction has grown. We have typically budgeted less than or equal to about $50,000 a year annually just to replace items that literally are broken or unsafe for use. In visiting the classrooms, we've seen that many of our teachers have purchased furniture out of their own personal funds, most of which is typically intended for home or personal use, not classroom use, or they've actually gotten it from garage sales or garbage picked it. We've heard from our staff about the weight, the heaviness of the furniture, and we have, I've seen quite a few cabinets throughout our classrooms that were actually handmade by district staff back when we had a full carpentry maintenance staff. So these items are over 25 years old, and teachers will tell you are quite a struggle in their classrooms. In terms of the process, we had actually started reviewing furniture samples before the pandemic and started getting feedback from staff in terms of what type of desk, what type of chair, mobile, not mobile. We had samples on site for staff to review, and our director of facilities actually looked at the construction of the furniture, the way the desks were mounted to the frames. We've learned a lot through the low bid process in terms of which items we've had to buy through that process that are quality items, other products which aren't as high quality that we're already seeing some chipping or damage to. So we do know what we want and found that, as I'll talk about soon, the purchasing contract that you just approved does offer these items. So we did send out a survey to all staff back in October of 2023, inviting all staff to, giving pictures of all the different furniture items that we had developed as standards and asking staff for items that they needed replaced in their classroom. We met with the kindergarten committee on multiple occasions to determine the classroom furniture standards for that program. I've met with every building principal in their buildings to review all of the staff requests. Either I or the building principal or both visited classrooms to clarify any questions that we had, to make sure that certain types of furniture were going to fit in the classrooms, and confirm the requests with staff. And we met with the furniture rep from Frank Cooney for contract pricing, negotiated some pricing, and visited the warehouse to actually make some final decisions on some of the items. We do know that going out to bid on our own requires that we would have to analyze every individual product that was submitted as an alternate equivalent to the items that we've chosen, which could be large numbers of items that we'd have to do that analysis for. Again, part of the reason we've determined to go through the purchasing co-op. In terms of the classroom furniture needs, in the future, we know collaboration and interaction between students will be key. We also talk about what comes first, or what's first, the cart or the horse. You know, we look at curriculums, we're looking at new curriculums that need kids to be more collaborative and interactive, but we don't have the setup in the classroom to do that. So do we do that first or second? So in terms of the furniture that we're recommending is flexible furniture, which would adapt and accommodate to the different teaching and learning styles to provide that interactive environment. I won't read all of these, you had it in the packet, but there's a variety of interests and needs that this flexible furniture that we're looking at would meet. In addition, there's a lot of additional storage items that our teachers need for the various tools that they have in the classroom or just to replace storage where shelves are warped and caving in. So in terms of the OMNI contract pricing, I have two, a summary here of two different processes that we could look at. Originally, we intended on looking this as a multi-year phase-in for the furniture. However, in meeting with the furniture rep and looking at additional discounts that they can get through the OMNI contract, we would save a significant amount of money, over $600,000, by doing it all in one large volume upfront purchase. To that extent, I can't help but recommend that we do it all upfront, because to do it over two or three years, A, the OMNI contract pricing is good with Frank Cooney through September 30th of 2025. It could increase at that point. And additionally, we wouldn't get the volume discount, so we know over three years, we would spend more. So to save over $600,000 over that time is the most fiscally responsible recommendation. In terms of this, delivery and installation costs could be another, excuse me, 10 to 12% depending on how we need to stagger that. And what I mean is Frank Cooney, whose warehouse is located in the Elk Grove Industrial Park, has already agreed to work with us to house all the furniture as it comes in and help us coordinate a delivery and installation schedule with our summer construction projects so that we don't have everything just shipped here and we have to figure out what to do with it, where to put it. They'll house it when we say this school's ready to go, because, as you know, we have six elementary schools under construction, we have summer school and one of our middle schools, so that also is a great help to us. In terms of the funding for this, we did have a budget of $500,000 in the referendum for furniture. We've received some additional federal special education idea funding that we have written for to support furniture for our special ed resource instructional, special ed resource classrooms, instructional classrooms, and our speech language pathologists, and then the rest would come from fund balance reserves. Based on this and the overall anticipated cost, it would take about $800,000 to $1 million, depending on delivery and installation, out of our reserves. The balance would come from the education fund. And in terms of our five-year forecast, that really just shifts everything down $1 million because it is a one-time purchase, it's not an ongoing cost. And with that, I would take any questions.
Much Stacy, any question? Go ahead.
Stacy, I thought right before, during COVID, or maybe right before COVID, we bought a whole bunch of furniture. We needed the right type of furniture for the distances and things of that nature. I remember, you know, we had a lot of stuff.
So you're correct to the extent that we actually needed a lot of desks, but being limited to bidding laws at the time of anything over $25,000, and we didn't have the time really to wait for that, we did buy just under $25,000 of the same desks I'm recommending here that all went to Thomas Middle School, because Thomas Middle School was mostly tables at that time in classrooms. And then the other, we bought quite a large number of what I'll call individual desks that were made for camping. They were like TV tray-type style that are not intended for long-term classroom use, but that helped us get through the pandemic, and we, I believe we used pandemic funds to support some of that. We would look at the summer hosting a garage sale to, a district-wide garage sale to try to sell off the majority of those desks. But again, they were more like, honestly, a plastic TV right there. That's what we bought.
You made the comments about it to be offset by future.
Then it won't. Right. At this point, the $1 million would reduce our education fund reserves. So it would just shift, when I was talking about the five-year focus line, it doesn't change the trajectory of it, it just shifts it down $1 million because it's a one-time purchase. Do I anticipate, I mean, every year, we have unspent funds because the goal is always to budget expenditures to the extent we'll cover all our costs. We always have it, in the last three years, we've always had at least $1 million of unspent funds in our budget every year. So I'm already aware of $400,000 in the current year budget we're not going to spend. So from that expense, from that picture, will our fund balance truly go down $1 million? No, I do think it will be recouped amongst other costs that won't be made, but I can't say that as of this second for five years, you know, for beyond that $400,000, let's say, until I get to the end of the year. No, I think you'll see in that presentation, we've covered all of that. Yeah. Well, I guess maybe the way I can frame it, because I don't know that I can answer that specific question, but when we presented those costs, we looked at the impact on the five-year forecast. And at that time, with all of, with all of the costs, we're still going to be in excess of 50% fund balance five years out. This affects it by $1 million. So it brings us maybe instead of 52% to 51%. The five years out. Yes, but it's assuming that that's at a 2.4%, not at a 5% going forward.
Okay, thank you, Stacy. Do we have any other questions? Thanks, Rich, for those questions. Okay, seeing no other questions, Lana, could you please call the vote?
Serniglio?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Faso?
Yes.
Olenichak?
Yes.
Niemann? Scott Bellato?
Yes.
Jogi?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is an action item on bank depositories, please. Can I have a motion?
Madam President?
Yes, Greg.
I move that the Board of Education approve the amended bank depositories.
Thank you. A second? Thank you, Rich. Stacy, could you please present the information? Today, we're holding on to Stacy.
Yes, typically, you do this during the Board reorganization every two years, but at the last Wheeling Township School Treasurer meeting, it was brought to our attention that the investment advisor that helps direct the investments for the treasurer intends to use this UMB Bank, which is a national banking association out of Kansas City, Missouri, to hold some of our investments, and it's not currently a bank that's on our list. So all of the individual participating districts in the Wheeling Township have to have this added to their list to have this be able to occur for the township treasurer.
Okay, thank you, Stacy. Any questions about that for Stacy? Seeing no questions, Lana, could you please call the vote?
Michael?
Yes.
Faso?
Yes.
Olenichak?
Yes.
Niemann?
Yes.
Scott Bellato?
Yes.
Jogi?
Yes.
Serniglio?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The next item is an update regarding the construction finances, which the Board has suggested. Stacy, could you please share your report along with?
Absolutely. And I have Mr. Schultz here for questions as well.
Yeah, welcome, Mr. Schultz.
So as a reminder, the $75 million referendum was based on $42.7 million of the high-range estimate for the full-day kindergarten additions and $32.9 million from the capital projects for the summers 2022 through 2026 that were presented originally in January of 2022. So as referenced, the chart here, the chart on your left that shows the total of the $42.7 million is the high-end range for the full-day kindergarten additions. The five-year capital plan estimates are shown on the right. So the referendum was based on the January 2022 estimate of 32.9. But as he does every year, Mr. Schultz re-analyses our capital projects plan for five years and moves things around based on needs and one year's newer information. So as you can see, even in February of '23, one year after this, dollars were shifted across years and increased by about $300,000 in total. Again, these are all estimated costs, but most significantly, you can see some of the shifts between the years. To the extent that it made sense in that five-year plan, we did try to coordinate and therefore shift projects that would align and improve our economies of scale, that would align with the building additions to occur last summer and this summer, because if you're going to have the trades onsite already to do the additions, you might as well having them do the remodeling inside the existing building. This chart shows you where we are currently with our referendum financials. So at the May 2023 board meeting, a total contract awarded was $42.4 million, which included a number of alternates. If you refer back to that board meeting, there were a number of alternates that were also approved. Those alternates were part of the capital plan, but were pulled into the scope of the building addition work in order, as I said, to achieve economies of scale. At that meeting also, Ryan had shared with the Board that the PNP bond, and I'm forgetting the payment performance bond premiums, when we go out to bid, individual contractors let their bids in with their own individual payment performance bonds. But then the Board awarded all those individual contracts to Nicholas, so they oversee each of those, oversaw, are overseeing each of those. Nicholas credited us back for the individual payment performance bonds because they issue their own full bond to cover the full project. So we received credits back against the contract of the bids we awarded because we paid that amount to Nicholas directly. So you can see the column in red are the credits we received against those contracts. We are paying the architect and construction management fees based on what was bid and awarded. However, once all the final costs are known and any unused allowances, if you recall, Mr. Schultz had discussed allowances that were built into the, there were $3 million in the budget for allowances, and then you can see broken out here the contingency allowance lines. Typically, 10 to 20% of those go unspent. We would anticipate nothing different than in this project, so those would be credited back against the total contract. And then the construction manager fees and architect fees would be also then adjusted to be based on that lower contract amount. So we wouldn't, our final bills would reflect those decreases. to be based on that lower contract amount. So we wouldn't, our final bills would reflect those decreases. So based on that, if you look full-day kindergarten, total estimated cost for full-day kindergarten, including all the professional fees, is the $44.6 million shown in column one, offset by the change orders, which were for those PNP bonds of the almost $500,000. The capital projects in column two that were the alternates awarded are shown, again, are showed in column two, and those total about 13.1 million. So the total bids awarded by the board, in this case, were $57.3 million. Again, just to kind of summarize that, for just the full-day kindergarten additions, overall, the additions, planned additions were just under what Mr. Schultz had anticipated. The allowances were just under what we had anticipated at the high end. But then you'll recall, the board did add the approval to expand the patent gym. That was not included in that original budgeted scope. So we knew that was going to be above and beyond what our original budget was. So in total, with the patent gym addition, the difference for full-day kindergarten is 1.5 million. Or if you look at the numbers, including all of the professional fees, which again will be adjusted at the contract end, in total, were over budget 1.5 million. So the fact that we anticipated our costs would go up by 2.5 or would be over by 2.5 for the addition, they're only over 1.5. So we actually are a million less than what our high-end budget would have reflected. So then looking at capital projects. So outside of those anticipated and included in the bid awards for full-day kindergarten, there were a couple other bids that the board did award this past spring, specifically the $7 million shown in column two in 2023. On top of that, the first column says, should say, internal or allowances. I didn't increase the height of the row enough. But the internal or allowance column, those are projects that we anticipate doing, but they could be done in-house by our staff, for example. All the door locks we're replacing, we ordered the lock, but our in-house guys are doing the work. So there won't be that full expense there because we're not contracting that out. And some of it is allowances. So if we need to replace a water heater or we have an allowance in the capital projects to replace water heater and we don't need to replace it, we just don't spend that money then. So the first column is projects that may or may not end up happening or may or may not get done in-house, but aren't going out to bid. In terms of the row for 2022, if you recall, the bonds were sold in September of '22. In August of '22, the board approved a resolution to reimburse because we were starting the work, but we weren't selling the bonds yet. The resolution to reimburse could only go back 60 days. So we only could reimburse ourselves for the summer capital projects in '22, which was the first year to be covered here, for work paid for since June. Honestly, to make it easy for accounting purposes, we took the large, two largest projects that were done in '22 and reimbursed the bonds out of that. We left everything else just running the normal way it would run through the funds we transfer from the O&M Fund into capital projects. So there was 2.76 million in 2022 that was paid for by referendum bonds. So in total, outside of the full-day kindergarten scope and the capital projects included there, it's 12.4 million through 2024. If you add back in the capital projects that were part of kindergarten, total capital projects covered out of that five-year plan in the first three years are 25.6 million. So now if we look at the summary of everything, professional service fees and bids awarded for full-day kindergarten, including capital projects, those come off that first chart I showed you of the full-day kindergarten additions. Those are the bids that awarded for that. Then you add in the bids awarded from the capital projects chart, which totaled 9.7, which was a 7 million in 2023 and the 2.7 million in 2022. So the total contracts the board has awarded are 67,142,445. The other budgeted capital projects, the ones I called internal or allowances, total 2.6 million. Again, may or may not be completed, but assuming they all are, then we've committed 69.8 million of our referendum proceeds through the end of the summer. In re-analysing the capital project plan now with all the shifts made, Ryan has estimated that capital projects for 2025 and 2026 will total 8.2 million. Therefore, total cost full-day kindergarten additions and 2022 through 2026 capital projects totaling 78, just over 78 million. In terms of the funding for that, we have the 75 million for the bond proceeds. We've earned 2.8 million on the referendum bonds. That money goes into that referendum bond account and has to be used for the same purposes as the referendum bonds. We have been awarded a school maintenance grant for 50,000. We have a Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity grant for 100,000. So we total 70, just over 78 million in the referendum capital projects, capital building account fund. That interest is only through February of 2024. We anticipate continuing to earn interest on the unspent bond proceeds until they're all spent, which is at least through September, if not October of this year. It's projected. We're currently earning interest at over 4.4% on these bond proceeds. We sold the bonds at 3.8%. Under federal arbitrage rules, because we are able to sell our bonds tax-exempt, we're not allowed to sell at a lower rate, to invest at a higher rate and make money on our debt. So we are going to be limited to $3,450,000 in interest earnings. So we're at 2.859. We're going to be limited to another 200,000, which we anticipate, we actually anticipate at this point probably having to refund the government about 600,000 in interest on our bond proceeds due to federal arbitrage rules. But that'll iron itself out when we get to the final payouts on everything. So from that perspective, we do believe that we have all of the funds needed with the referendum to cover both the full-day kindergarten additions as well as the capital projects through summer of '26, as indicated in the referendum process. Just as an addition and a reminder to the board, on top of this, we're continuing to transfer funds from our operations and maintenance fund to our capital projects fund for future capital projects to help fund once we get past the referendum project years. And with that, I'm happy to take questions.
Okay, thank much for really that so clearly for us. For Stacy?
Stacy or Ryan, or the President?
Yes, it's Rich.
Stacy or Ryan, or just looking at page nine, something like that. Talk about, oh, yeah, right there. Oh, yes. You talk about that the projected 25 and 26 was 8.7. And a question around, we had, you know, earlier on page nines, before 25 spent projected 8.7 billion. So is that did the work? Or, you know, and it was incorporated with all that other stuff? Or is it stuff we're not, we're deferring, in which case we didn't, or something else?
No, my recollection is that we did move it into projects and years that we are implementing it. And again, the recast of '25 and '26 was, again, just a recast of future years. So again, everything up to '25 and '26 is included in some way that it's bid or we did do it, or it's installed with the full-day kindergarten addition. So the intent is that everything up to '25, '26 is included in some capital portion or the kindergarten addition portion.
Then, and you've already answered, but just to be fully clear, then back when we went through this capital plan, you had this long list of stuff, curtains, desks, whatever, right? And so you're saying by the, right now, it's still in the plan that by the end of '26, all that will be cared for in one way, shape, or form? Not deferred, but just resolved, changed, things of that nature?
Yes, I think '25, excuse me, '25 and '26 was recast a little bit, just based on the newest priorities, and that's typical. Again, like when we project our five-year, we're looking, you know, to the next five years even to see if things are getting moved up or moved back. So again, there are some items in '25 and '26 that are just recast for the overall bigger plan that we have put together. So there are some items that have just moved up. We're trying to keep the costs in reason with what we're expecting, as we normally would. So again, there might be some, a few different items, but the intent is still the same. We're still trying to capture items related to the capital improvements, air handlers, major capital items for the facilities.
I apologize in advance for this one. It's probably my marketing degree not serving me well. But if you would, so the, kind of the updated capital projects estimate on the first page nine, that's 33 and change, okay? Let me see if I'm tracking right here. 13 of that, if you go to the third page nine. So just remember that number, 33, and then jump up to the capital project summary. See where I'm going? Okay. Yeah, which I think is the same as the 13 million. Go up another slide. That one, right? That's that gray 13 million. Okay. So going back to the number you were all supposed to remember, what was it now? 33 million for up to 2026. 13 million of that is summarized through 2024 on the third slide nine. Where's the other 20 million? Well, actually, it's not 20 million because 12 and a half million was pulled in, right? But there's still, again, without an Excel spreadsheet in form.
So 25.6 million of capital projects accounted for through 2024 out of 33.
Okay, that's what, so.
Then the additional 8.2 brings you.
Okay.
Back to the 33, okay.
So for example, 2024, that 10.6 million, a significant portion of that was Westgate School galvanized piping and work in the southern end of the building. That's all put into the scope of the bid because it's a huge project to begin with. It only made sense. So that number came way down then for any future or outside work. I mean, there is, most of that, I think, a million-something of it wasn't Westgate.
Okay.
Okay, thanks for those questions. Seeing no other comments or questions, we will move on to the next item, which is an action item, which is the extension of the bus transportation contract. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam President?
Yes, Greg.
I move that the Board of Education approve the extension of the bus transportation contract with Cook County School Bus Company for 2024, '25, and 2025, '26, as presented.
Thank you. Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kevin. Stacy?
So historically, we've been able to only approve a bus transportation contract for three years to start, then renew it for two, and then renew one year at a time. As of January 1st, the legislation has changed mainly because of the requirement to move to electric buses. But outside of that, it now says that contracts, school boards can go beyond those former requirements and approve a bus contract not to exceed 10 years. But anything over five years does require the use to start switching to electric vehicles. So based on this, and in talking with our bus transportation contractor, they've given both a individual year renewal proposal plus a two-year renewal proposal. I am recommending that we, the board, approve a two-year renewal proposal. We've been with Cook County School Bus for a long time. The last time we did go out to bid, we only had one other vendor bid on us, as is fairly typical experience that a lot of our neighboring districts had last year when they were going out to bid. And the two-year proposal, I think, is, in the long, in the long run, in the two-year long run, more safe fiscally than doing a one-year proposal and risking a different increase in year two because with the one-year proposal, we would need to see an increase in the following year of less than 3.1%, which I'm not sure, seeing the way their costs are growing like everybody else's. But the fact that they can, need to, can pass that cost down then in their bids, I wouldn't expect a second year renewal to come in at 3.1%. So based on that, I am recommending that we lock in with the 7% increase for next year with a 5% increase for the following year.
Okay, great. Thank you, Stacy, for that information. Any questions, comments? Okay, seeing none. Lana, could you please call the vote?
Faso?
Yes.
Olenichak?
Yes.
Nieman?
Yes.
Scott Pilato?
Yes.
Jogi?
Yes.
Sr. Niglia?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Thank you, Stacy. We'll now move on to and it's going to be. Okay, thank you. So the next item is an action item to approve a memorandum of understanding for full-day kindergarten and the physical education. Can I have a motion?
Madam President?
Yes, Greg.
I move that the Board of Education approve the memorandum of understanding full-day kindergarten and elementary physical education as presented.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thanks, Kevin. Dr. K, please present the information on this MOU.
Yes. Thank you. So before you this evening, I am presenting this memorandum of understanding between the Board of Education and the Arlington Teachers Association. As a result of the Board of Education's decision to implement full-day kindergarten and increase the amount of elementary PE per week beginning in the '24, '25 school year, the Arlington Teacher Association presented a demand to bargain the impact on their working conditions. Representatives of the Board and the Arlington Teachers Association met on December 20th, 2023 to bargain in good faith the impact and reached a tentative agreement that is memorialized in this MOU. This MOU lasts through August 15th, 2026, or the end of the current negotiated professional agreement through the '25, '26 school year. Some of the items that we bargained in this agreement are that classroom teachers will receive 30 additional minutes of planned time because their students are going to PE for an additional 30 minutes. We also agreed that LMC will be changed to 40. agreed that LMC will be changed to 45 minutes for all grade levels. Right now, it could change from 30 all the way to 60 based on the grade level, so all grades will have 45 minutes. And we expanded the start and end time for teachers' lunchtime to allow more flexibility when we are scheduling art, music, and PE teachers that travel between buildings. So it gives us a little more flexibility in the scheduling. And the last item that we talked about in this agreement is for next school year, we are recommending or have scheduled and planned two parent-teacher conference days, but we don't want to agree to that for all of the future. So it's only a one-time agreement that we'll do two parent-teacher conference days next year, so we didn't want that to be a precedent that was set. So we wanted to make sure that the language indicated we will meet again and talk about going back to the four days or a different process altogether based on feedback. But next year's calendar has two days. Traditionally, we've had four. We didn't want this to be a precedent set that we only have two days now in the future for parent-teacher conferences. So at this time, I would recommend that the Board of Education approve this MOU between the Board of Ed and the Arlington Teachers Association as presented. Are there any questions? Great question. So the amount of time they get for lunch remains the same, but in our contract, we have a teacher's lunch can start no earlier than a certain time and start or end no later than. So we just wanted an expansion on those times, so that an itinerant teacher could start lunch approximately 20 minutes earlier or end approximately 40 minutes later. It could impact the, what traditionally we know as the, the school-based art, music, PE teacher, but that's not the plan. The plan would be to only impact those that are traveling between the two buildings, or two or more buildings throughout the week. So it could impact only the special area teachers. It does not apply to a classroom third-grade teacher or even a kindergarten teacher.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah.
They basically, what it comes down to is it does not impact student contact time for a child.
Great question. No, it does not. And we also aren't seeking to start teachers' lunches earlier or end them later. This is really a scheduling benefit, and where if we do have to do it, we've agreed to talk with the union about who it would be impacted, who would be impacted and why.
And Dr. K, remind me, what, how long is gym right now?
So they have two sections of 30 minutes.
Yeah.
Next year, all grades will have three sections of 30 minutes.
30 minutes, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none. Thank you, Dr. K. Lana, could you please take us to vote?
Olenichak?
Yes.
Nierman?
Yes.
Scapalato?
Yes.
Jogi?
Yes.
Serniglia?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Faso?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And the next item is an action item. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam President?
Yes.
I move that the Board of Education approve the resignation agreement one with Gail Radigan as presented.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kevin. Dr. K, if you could please present the information.
Yes. So before you this evening, I'm presenting this resignation agreement one on behalf of Gail Radigan, who is interested in resigning from her position with the conditions written into this agreement regarding letters of reference and future employment inquiries. So at this time, I would recommend that the Board of Education approve the resignation agreement one as presented. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. K. Seeing no questions, comments. Lana, could you please call the vote? Nierman?
Yes.
Scapalato?
Yes.
Jogi?
Yes.
Serniglia?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Faso?
Yes.
Olenichak?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, thanks all for your patience with the mics. We're gonna go on to a resignation agreement two, which is an act, action item. Please could I have a motion?
Madam President?
Yes, Greg.
I move that the Board of Education approve the resignation agreement two with Heather Rehm as presented.
Thank you. Dr. K, if you could please present the information.
Yes. Before you this evening, I'm presenting this resignation agreement two on behalf.
Oh, yeah. Hold on, Dr. K.
Yeah.
I missed the second.
That's all right.
Can we please have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kevin. Now, Dr. K, you can present the information.
Yes. Before you this evening, I'm presenting this resignation agreement two on behalf of Heather Rehm, who is interested in resigning from her position with the conditions written into the agreement regarding letters of reference and future employment inquiries. At this time, I recommend the Board of Education approve resignation agreement two as presented. Any questions?
Seeing no questions or comments. Lana, could you please call the vote?
Scapalato?
Yes.
Jogi?
Yes.
Serniglia?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Faso?
Yes.
Olenichak?
Yes.
Nierman?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. K.
Thank you.
Our next section of the agenda is the superintendent report, and the first item is the Freedom of Information Act.
So the Board sees, we've had three Freedom of Information Act requests since we met last, and all of those have been responded to.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Byn. The next thing we're gonna talk about is to set the date for the board organization meeting. And just to give you a little background, the Illinois Boards of Education are now required to set the date for their organization meetings in March of odd number years. But since District 25 officer terms are one year, instead of two years, we have an organization meeting in odd and even years. So therefore, the Board needs to discuss the date for the organization meeting. These meetings are required to follow a specific timeline, as you know, and typically happen in April during election years. So it makes sense to continue to have them in April in non-election years. So there are a couple of choices that the administrator, Dr. Byn, has given us. I recommend that the Board have its organization meeting as a part of the regular board meeting on April 9th coming up next month. However, the Board can choose a separate date in April if you wish, and we can schedule a special meeting. So keep that date in mind, April 9th, and we'll talk about it in a second. And at the April organization meeting, the Board will elect officers for one-year terms and set meeting dates and times for 2024, 2025. Following that meeting, the Board President will work on committee assignments. Now that, you know, it's really exciting as far as sustainability of officers. I'm really looking forward to see, we have a really strong board, and I'm really looking forward to see new, you know, board members step into officer roles. So that'll be exciting to see as, so we have three officer roles, as you know, president, vice president, and secretary. And I, I, do look forward to see new leadership come up and step in, so it'll be great to see that. So at the April organization meeting, you know, we've attached, so there's two, there's two things that we need to kind of fulfill today. The other item, other than the, of the April 9th date, is we have to consider if we would like to continue our meetings on Tuesdays, or if we want to return to Thursdays. Now, the Tuesday meetings, I can tell, you know, as Board President, even in preparation, I can truly see that for the administrators, it's really hard to do a turnaround for a Tuesday board meeting. So Tuesday meetings are very challenging for the staff, and we would request, you know, the administrator, and even I see this, if we could go back to Thursdays. But however, staff, our admin is being super accommodating. If the Board would continue to have, like to have board meetings on Tuesdays, they could do what's best for us. So two things we need to decide on. First of all, is the April date for the organization meeting, April 9th, is that a good date? Should we kind of commit to that date, officer elections and board reorganization? Yeah, I see a thumbs up. I'm seeing a couple of thumbs up. Okay, thank you. That's the all thumbs up. So April 9th it is. And let's talk about the day of the week for the board meetings. So we've always had it Thursdays, but then we moved to Tuesdays, and now the request is, could we move back to Thursdays? Any, what are, the thoughts on that, Brian?
Yeah, Madam President, just to kind of recap, if I recall, we moved to Tuesdays more or less, right, so that we weren't in alignment with mostly 214, right? So I guess my only question would be, aside from you said, is there any, aside from Anisha said, is there anything anecdotal or otherwise that, you know, would kind of lend to why, why we're switching it back kind of so soon?
So if we went to Thursdays, we put a couple draft suggested dates for you, the dates that we would suggest should we move to Thursdays, there would be two out of the 12 meetings that would be the same date as 214. So the September meeting and the June meeting, their draft calendar, those two would be the same night. All other Thursdays that we've selected, and again, some of these are based on legal requirements for the dates for budgets and tax levies, things like that. Those other 10 do not conflict with 214. We could always switch dates. For example, the September 1, we'd have to watch when we do that, because there is a legal timeline there on the budget that, so we couldn't really move it up, but we could maybe move it forward somehow. We could move it up a little bit. So otherwise, that's one thing we did try to look at, is making sure that we stayed away from 214 as much as possible. And then, but of course, if we did Tuesdays, or Mondays, or Wednesdays, or Fridays, or Saturdays, or Sundays, we wouldn't conflict with any 214 dates, because they are planning Thursdays. And then, as Anisha was saying, right, these are the board's meetings, so the dates need to work for you, number one. That's primary. But from the staff perspective, we are seeing it as much more challenging for us doing them on Tuesdays for a variety of reasons. One being because it's typical, board members typically use their free time on the weekends to review materials and are reaching out to us Mondays or, you know, to follow up on things. So it's giving us a shorter amount of time to prepare. And we appreciate the board's moving to one meeting a month. We think that's really wise. Our meetings have been going longer over the past four or five years, and it's Tuesday, and then, as you all do, we have a work week, right, after. It is difficult for us on Tuesdays because of the variety of other administrator meetings that we have at the cabinet level, at the district admin level, which we can't change, because they tie into regional meetings or area meetings with 214 and center schools. So we're just putting that request, that if, if it works for the board, Thursday is significantly better for staff. But again, primarily, we're going to do the dates that work for you, and if Thursdays don't work for the board, then we'll continue, of course, to prepare for Tuesdays, or any other day, should you wish to change the day of the week.
Madam President? Yes, Gina? I do have more conflicts on Thursdays. Okay.
Ma'am.
Now, I could look at these and see if I can make it work, but with travel schedules and things for my day job, Thursdays are more difficult. Okay, thanks for that, Gina. Okay, thanks for that. And then, of course, we're, we're not gonna meet on Saturday or Sunday, so that's out. So.
Madam President?
Yes.
Just speaking for myself personally, for work and family conflicts, Thursdays are actually better for me than Tuesdays, just for what it's worth.
Yeah. So, Greg?
Since we're weighing in, I could make Thursday work. I would just, and this happened last time we were on Thursdays, the October date, I can tell, I know I have an immovable conflict. So if there was another Thursday that month. But other than that, I can make either day work.
And then, and then Wednesdays, is, is that something, Dr. Byn? Would that help? Is that crazy? Hump day?
We did provide for the board, just so you could see what all of the other area organizations, when they have their meetings. So just for reference, right, 214 on Thursdays, we've got the other area school districts would, really wouldn't conflict with us. The library has it on Tuesday nights, the village has theirs on Monday nights, and the park district has them on Tuesday nights.
So I guess if the village can make Monday work, and I know it's really tough, it sounds like, from what I'm hearing, Dr. Byn, does it sound like we have to stick to Tuesdays? Yeah? Yeah, does alternating help, Dr. Byn?
I think that might get confusing, to be honest with you. Probably just stay two or Tuesday.
So thank you to the staff for making this all happen on a Tuesday. So we'll continue on a Tuesday.
So we'll bring that suggested dates forward to you in April, and you would officially vote on that board meeting schedule in April.
Okay, great. On April 9th?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Okay, we will move forward to the first reading of policies, which is the next agenda item. Dr. Byn, if you could, please review the first reading of policies with the board.
So there are a lot of policies here, but the vast majority of them have no change. So the policy committee, through the board's process, did review this. We had two policy committee members who would be able to be, who were present. So while these may be unanimously voted on, know that that was two of the three who could be present at the time. And if you don't mind, I'm gonna do a very quick flip for myself and just call out any policy that has anything maybe significant. As you can see on these policies, anything in red is what IASB is recommending we delete. Anything in green, IASB or the attorneys are recommending that we add. And anything in blue is something that either staff or the policy committee is recommending. So I'll turn, for example, to 2:52. I think it's 2:52 and not as it's listed, 2:252, but we'll have to, so it's just 2:52? Is that correct, Lana? Okay. Which is, that's okay, thank you. Which is board member role at graduation. And we wanted to add, we do this through procedure, but we wanted to put it in policy so that it lives there. The board shall extend the courtesy of allowing current and former board members who are parents or legal guardians of students to present the diploma to the graduating student. So currently, if you were to have an eighth grader, you have the opportunity to come up and present them their diploma. Should you be, go off the board at some point, and you have a child who's an eighth grader, you'd be extended the opportunity to come back and do that as well. So that's one. Under 2:150, I'll also draw your attention, there's a lot of highlighted blue about committees. This is actually language that previously IASB had had in the, in this policy, but at one point years ago, felt it could be taken out, so we took it out. And they've now come back and said, no, we really, we should have it back in. So really, what it says, what's changed or come back into our policy, is that the district should, moving forward, have a parent-teacher advisory committee and a behavioral interventions committee. We have always used our Arlington Heights Council PTAs as our parent-teacher advisory committee, and we do have a behavioral interventions committee. So we're just adding that language back in, so that again, especially moving forward, Dr. K can make sure that those committees are followed through on each year. And I don't think, I'm gonna take a quick flip, but I don't think there was anything else that was really significant in these. No, but I'm happy to answer any questions if the board has reviewed these and has questions about them. Otherwise, these would come back to it. Otherwise, these would come back to you at a future meeting as a second reading for action.
Okay. Thank you so much, Dr. Vine. Any questions, comments about the policies? And that was just first reading, so not an action item. As a reminder to the board, you know, when we look at the research of effective school boards and high-functioning school boards, having a policy committee is one of the ingredients. So I'm really proud of our board for being super thorough in our process of adopting and implementing our policies, and that's one of the reasons, one of the marks of our Effective Governance Award as well, because it was stipulations that when we put a policy committee, we didn't know that, but it was great when we filled out the application. We're like, oh, we do this anyway, because they asked if we do it too. So it is definitely an ingredient. So kudos to my colleagues Greg and Rich, who put a lot of time into the policy committee and all board members. There's a couple of you who always attend, and you're always welcome, so thank you to the policy committee. We will move on. Lana, do we have any input for the second community input? Okay, no input today. So as far as future agenda items, I had a clarifying question for you, so we'll continue our future agenda item section of the meeting. And early in the school year, I brought up this topic of student representatives on the board, which Kevin highlighted today as well, and policy. And I, we don't, I wanted to just double-check, we don't have to have this as a future topic, but I can't recall, now that can, Dr. Vine, neither of us could recall, did we say, should we move forward or should we not discuss this as a, at a K8 level as far as having a student representative? And Dr. Vine, I know you brought this up, so could you add, I know I'm missing something.
I did review the tape to see what had we decided, and at that time, you had asked your colleagues to consider, is having a student representative on the board in some way something that all of the board would like to have as a future topic? And then, we kind of left it at there, so I think now is the time that you're coming back saying, is that something that you want as a future topic for the staff to put a presentation together about ways that students participate in board meetings? Or is that not a future topic that you're interested in at this point?
And I was telling Dr. Vine, so, Dr. Vine is great about kind of making sure we're following through on our commitments and conversations, so I was telling Dr. Vine, you have a student representative for it. Different ways to continue to engage students in governance, like presentations, maybe presenting things that at their school, maybe having some kind of creative, just to continue student in some way, not, she had different, different students are engaged at board level. So I just wanted to double-check before, I wanted to, well, of the board, that we do this, or should we, and I'm okay either way, I just think it's fascinating, but tied to it. So any thoughts on it? Rich?
So, a couple thoughts, and I'm trying to think, first off, participating in the board meeting, I'd have reservations about meeting hours, things of that nature, all those types of things. Especially some of the topics, you know, A, may not be interesting, but just that type of dilemma. But I do recall, and I can't remember who said it, oftentimes, you recognize sports activities, but we're not recognizing the other great things that the students are doing, whether it be academic, creative, things of that nature. So to the point of having them participate or be recognized maybe in other non, in addition to...
Yeah.
Sporting, I think, would be a good way to get that involvement, get that understanding, get that type of engagement at that point. And then, we see where it develops from there.
Good point, Rich.
Madam President?
Yes, Greg.
I think we, whether it's here or after a presentation, I think, I would be comfortable saying we're open to it. What I would want to hear more than, from Dr. Vine, not just how is it done, but if it aligns with other goals that would serve, you know, the students' needs, right? Like, I wouldn't put this forward or want to move forward with this just for our interests.
No.
It is, and you've already, you did express, like, some positives, but as long as it's aligned whatever way, it's, they're reporting out, they're participating some way, but that it truly aligns and is not a burden and, you know, advances the goals the staff already has for our kids.
Right. No, a great point, Greg. And the one point, and again, I'd love to, if it is the collective vote, because apparently just showed that there are K8 districts who do this, and so I don't know exactly how to see how they do it, but from kind of a, I think, age expectancy, or already, we could tell, right? When it comes to school board governance, I think there's a lot of hesitancy around, like, folks running for school board, so it'd be great to have kids start young in the process. And also, beyond that, just leadership development for students at a young age, to continue to cultivate that and give them opportunities for leadership is also a good way to do it for us to support that goal in student achievement.
Madam President, I believe that most of the schools have student councils. Perhaps we could, we could set something up where we, we go out into the community and we do, we listen and we invite. Maybe we could, as board members, each take a turn with a different school's student council and sit with them and talk and listen and gather ideas that way. That may be a gateway, kind of an introduction. We see how that goes and then decide what's next.
Yeah, that's great. I like that a lot, too, is, I always see that the mayor goes to speak to our second-grade classroom, I think. I believe it's part of the curriculum possibly in some schools. It'd be great to have us, if we, yeah, I think that's a great idea, get us out there just to engage with our student representative and student leaders at the buildings. So all great ideas. So, so as a show of hands, should Dr. Vine go and look, give us kind of what other districts are doing with student voice at the board table, or should we let this go? And like I said, I'm not tied either way. Show of hands, how many people are interested?
Could I interject?
Yes.
Dr. Vine, after hearing what we've just discussed, what are, what are your thoughts on paths we could move forward?
Thank you. So, yeah, I have information on what a couple of other districts are doing, right? Districts at the high school level, it's much more common. But my suggestion would be, rather than me come do a presentation at a board meeting, we already have the information on how student voice has gotten at each of our schools in the district, and I could put together some suggestions and just a, maybe not a board member report, but a letter to you that says, here are some future student council meetings or ways to start to connect in the 24, 25 school year, maybe set up a couple of those experiences for you. And then, with some of that information, then you could determine, do we want to move it to another level?
Thanks for that suggestion. That sounds great, Dr. Vine. And I think it also comes from, at the triple I conference in Ipanema, and like Kevin's saying, with legislation, right, the student voice at the board table is kind of garnering interest nationally, and it is sometimes at high school, but it is like for middle-school students as well. So it's just interesting. So that'd be great to give us kind of more information and doesn't have to be at the board table. Thanks for having that conversation and those ideas. That was, that was good. So moving on, are there any new topics that have been previously discussed with Dr. Vine that we want to put as topics with dates to be determined or future topics? Okay, seeing none. I think it is time to adjourn this meeting, correct? So if the board, so, yes, do we have a motion to adjourn the board meeting? Thank you. Thank you, Rich. A second, please?
Second.
Okay, and it's before nine o'clock. Hopefully, it is not nine. It's 8:59. Oh, 8:59, we're ended. Okay. Yeah, please call the roll, Lana.
Jogi?
Yes.
Serniglia?
Sure.
Michael?
Yes.
Faso?
Yes.
Olenichak?
Yes.
Nierman?
Yes.
Scapalato?
Good night, everybody.